And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this world for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. We are being broadcast live over Van Buren Television Channel 12, also on YouTube. Clerk Wright, would you please take the role?
I will. Trustee White. Trustee Miller. Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Treasurer Bud.
Here.
The clerk is present supervisor McNair.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The first item is an executive summary, just to go over quickly what we're going to be covering tonight. The consent agenda is first up. We have reappointments for Joe Baskin and Victor De Libra to the Downtown Development Authority. They've agreed and we're looking forward to having them back. We also have an appointment, a new appointment for John Herman to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and an approval of a resolution for a corrective action plan to our OPEB accounts, which is our retiree medical accounts. There will be a presentation celebrating 100 years of women's suffrage, which will be presented to the League of Women Voters, and a presentation, and then after that, there'll be a presentation by Lisa Lothringer from the DDA. We received the Elm Parks 2020 Outstanding Park Design Award for our new Quirk Park Splash Pad. In addition, we have some new business, which includes approval of a professional services agreement with PEA for the segment of the Iron Bell Trail through Van Buren Township, and approval of another PEA one for another section of the Iron Bell Trail. We're moving on to adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the adoption of the agenda?
I move.
Is that trustee treasure?
Support.
Trustee White. Okay, I hear no discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Trustee Miller, it's your time.
Okay. Work-study session minutes of February 3rd, board meeting minutes of February 4th, prepaid list of February 6th, prepaid list of February 13th, voucher list of February 18th, all of 2020. Approval of the reappointments of Joe Baskin and Victor De Libra to the Downtown Development Authority with terms to expire March 9, 2024. Approval of the appointment of John Herman to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a term to expire December 1, 2022. Approval of the resolution 2020-05 Corrective Action Plan.
Support.
I have a motion for the consent by trustee Miller, supported by treasurer Bud. It's non-debatable, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Before we go on, I'd like to call on trustee Martin, because we have one of our new volunteers in the audience.
Good evening. I would like to thank Mr. John Herman for offering his services to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is, that is one of the most important boards that our township has, and it allows residents or companies to come to the board with ordinance variances, so they may improve their property or establish their businesses. So I thank Mr. Herman for stepping up to the plate today. I trust that he will be a reliable and good commissioner, and I'd just like to thank him again.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say, John?
I have of myself.
Okay.
Mr. McNamara twisted my arm and told me he needed me badly.
I did.
So I couldn't say no. So I'm happy to serve my township, and if you have any questions, I'll feel free to ask me and I'll answer them as best as I can.
Thank you. Could you come along here, so we can each shake your hand and say thank you? Thanks. Oh!
Take out our most expensive off.
Wow!
All right.
You might need to move that podium up a little bit.
Yeah.
Next is a public hearing, which we have no public hearings today. Next is correspondence, announcements, and presentations. Let's, let's, let's start right off with the League of Women Voters. Trustee Frazier, do you want to go down there and make it, make this, could the trust, the League of Women Voters come forward? Come on over there where you can, all of you. All of you, we, this is a kind of a big deal. Yeah, you guys are gonna have to get closer, Rosemary and Alicia.
Well, it's a great honor that, that I am able to present this proclamation of 100th year anniversary of the 19th Amendment. I hate to think where this country would be without women and the women's vote. We play an important role. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Congress passed the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States guided by the shared ideas of freedom, sovereignty, democracy, civil liberties, and individual rights, and whereas Michigan was the second state to ratify the National Suffrage Amendment on June 10, 1919, and whereas the 19th Amendment was ratified and became law on August 26, 1920, allowing Michigan women to vote for president for the first time in the November 2, 1920 election, and whereas the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the 19th Amendment were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States and worldwide." So it goes on to say, "The League of Women Voters has over 400,000 members and supporters nationwide, and they have over 700 local leagues in every state in the country, has in its 100 years of existence helped secure hundreds of voting rights for citizens, has provided nonpartisan election information at the national, state, and local level, and is continually advocated for a strong democracy. Now therefore, the Van Buren Township Board of Trustees does hereby recognize the 100 year anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote on June 4, 1919, which was ratified and became law on August 26, 1920, and further that the League of Women Voters is recognized and appreciated on the occasion of its 100th anniversary in 2020, as a source of nonpartisan election information that empowers voters and defends democracy to the benefit of our community." And it's signed by the, all the members of the Van Buren Board. I'd like to present that to Paula Bowman, who is president of the, our local chapter of the League of Women Voters. It's actually the Belleville, and we are associated with the Plymouth branch.
Yep, Northwest Wayne County.
Northwest Wayne County.
Would you like to say something?
Yes.
We'd love to hear from you.
Jeez. Going that way. Let's go, let's move this up.
Move this.
You can't move it.
I mean, that is.
You cannot move that.
He just did.
Plug's there, yeah.
All right. Just be careful. I won't go that way. Paula, don't go this side.
So, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, serving this community, we're grateful for your good wishes on the League's 100th birthday, and for the opportunity to call attention to the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. Many of us had great grandmothers, or maybe even grandmothers, who could remember their complete disenfranchisement from participating in a government that created and enforced laws for them, and about them, since before the Civil War, women and men have organized, marched, protested, lobbied, and have even gone to jail in a collective fight for voting rights for women. We can be proud that Michigan gave women the right to vote in 1917, and then was one of the first states to ratify the 19th Amendment in 1919. This was not a cakewalk, however. The 1917 vote was preceded by two unsuccessful attempts to change Michigan's constitution in 1850 and 1867, and three different petition drives to bring women's suffrage to a vote, to the state legislature, were ignored. The legislature wouldn't even call for a vote. But eventually, equality prevailed, and women did win the right to vote in 1920. The League of Women Voters was organized as a result of the passage of the 19th Amendment, and its main purpose then was providing candidate and issue information to the 50% of the population who had never voted before. Over the 10 decades of our existence, the League of Women Voters has applied the lessons learned in our earliest days to engage and empower all voters. As we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the League and the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, we are reminded that government of the people, by the people, and for the people cannot function without active involvement of the people. This is the year to remember the struggles of our ancestors who fought for the right to vote for all citizens. This is the year to increase Michigan's voter turnout from the embarrassingly low rate of 63% in 2016. This is the year to realize that thanks to the passage of Proposal 3 last year, voter registration and no reason absentee ballots have made it more convenient than ever to exercise the privilege of voting. This is the year to realize that there is more power at the ballot box than complaining on social media. So I ask all of you, and I know you will, to join myself and our League members to urge all of Michigan's registered voters to make our democracy stronger by voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to point out that Paula is from the Plymouth branch of the League of Women Voters, and Barbara Miller was the community activist that got our local Belleville area League started. And as always, we're grateful to have community support on such an important issue as voting in elections, and we hope that everybody takes voting very serious as an American.
All right.
Oh, and it's not just an organization for women. Men are encouraged to join the League of Women Voters also. Supervisor and the clerk of Van Buren Township are also members. So, and trustee Miller is also. So if you're interested, you can go online and look up League of Women Voters, and there's an application process there. It's a very vital information source for when people vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're all good? Okay? All right, we're gonna move on then to our next item, which is Lisa Lothringer with the DDA. We have an award.
Everyone. The Splash Pad Project was initiated by the DDA as part of our ongoing commitment to the community and viewed as an economic driver for the businesses within the DDA boundaries. We were pleased when the township and the Civic Fund both opted to be involved with the project. By combining financial resources, we were able to not only do the splash pad, but also install a new playground, walking paths, and changing rooms. The final result was a project that has already had a profound positive impact on our community. At the end of January, Elm Parks recognized the DDA for the design and dedication involved in taking this project from concept to completion in just 70 working days. And the DDA in turn would like to thank our partners, Van Buren Township and the Van Buren Civic Fund. Can I bring them up to you, or do you want to come to me?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes. Outstanding Park Design Award. We deserve it. We've worked hard to be, to show that we're, we're not just an also-ran kind of a community. We're trying to be the best we can be, and getting the Outstanding Park Design of 2020 is part of what we're expecting to do nowadays, so.
To the chair.
Yeah.
On behalf of the Civic Fund, which I am a member of, I would like to thank them for this designation, and they were more than pleased to chip in and help, and they really value what that has done. So, on behalf of the Civic Fund members, thank you very much.
It was a great partnership. We all shared the pain, and the DDA led the way in a wonderful way. Thank you very much, Lisa Lothringer. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move forward. We have some more announcements. Could you everybody, hand it some out? We'll start down here with trustee White.
The September Day Senior Center will be having an income tax preparation class on Wednesday, February 19th and February 26th. Call 734-284-6999 to make an appointment for tax preparation at the center. That's an income tax preparation class on Wednesday, February 19th and February 26th. The telephone number again is 284-6999 to make an appointment for tax preparation.
Trustee White, Martin, excuse me.
Parks and Recreation is hosting a Kids Crafty Saturday on March 14th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Children's grades K through 5 will have the opportunity to make either fairy play dough or jar of dinosaur. $5 per child per craft. And also, the Recreation Department is having a Beginner's Hustle Line Dance, which begins on Wednesday, February 26th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Cost for residents is $40, non-residents 55. Drop-ins can pay, residents can pay $6, and non-residents may pay $8.
Clerk?
First of all, I'd like, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, not only for what all you do for the, in the clerking industry, and the collaboration that you do with the clerks around, not only the county of Wayne, but all over the state of Michigan. We appreciate all your valiant efforts and what you do to help us get the vote out. With that being said, I'd like to share a little information regarding this year, in regards of the new law that's passed with the no reason absentee. No reason absentee is, we all know a law that was passed last, last November. In regards to, you used to have, had to have one of six reasons in order to use the designation to vote absentee. Now you can just ask for the ballot with no reason. And what, what that does, one of the things is that the clerks around the state of Michigan is always lobby for that. We always thought that it shouldn't be a reason for the voter to have to ask for a ballot. It should be their, their right. With that being said, in 2012, since this has been passed, in 2012, we, we, at this time of the year, we issued, we had issued roughly 1,184 absentee ballots. In 2016, we started an initiative in '12 to try to increase it, even with the old law. We increased it to the 2,142. So at this time in 2016, we had, we had, we had sent out 2,142 absentee ballots. Right as, as of today, 2020, we've sent out 3,555 absentee ballots with 5,832 on the absentee voter list. That's of a registered voter of 23,000, registered voters, approximately 20,000 active voters. We are steady pushing for people to put their name on absentee ballot, on the absentee list, which means that we're gonna send you a, an application for a ballot regardless. Every election that's, that we have, we'll send you an application. Then it's on the, be, the corner of the, of that voters, to send that application back to receive the ballot. Just because you're on the list don't mean that you're gonna vote, but that's a bigger chance that you will vote, because once you see the application, that's a bigger chance that, that voter will send the application back and request a ballot. We're gonna push for that in 2016 for the November-June election. That's the election that we know that's gonna be a big increase. In November-June election, we had roughly almost 4,500 absentee ballots in 2016. We look for that to double, at least double, in November, because we have doubled, we tripled what we had in '12. We put almost double what we have right now since 2016. So we look for that number in November to at least double. With that being said, we have, we have actively added in a third absentee counting board to accommodate for those ballots that need to be counted. We, we, we engage in that, we look forward to that. We hope, we think that's a very thing, very good thing for, to be accomplishment to have made in order to, for our residents to not alleviate that barrier of being able to request a ballot, alleviate that barrier of saying that, "I don't wanna wait in line." We know that, that's one of the things that hinder people, they go to the pole, they go to the precinct, and there's a line, and they don't wanna stand in line after long day's work. They just, they, they turn around, they walk away, and they go home. Well, we wanna alleviate that. We wanna give you, every opportunity to vote, we wanna give you the reasons to cast your vote. That's one thing that we have that can't be taken away from you, it can't be stricken out by law. You have a right to vote that was given to every individual once they turn 18, and everyone, we need to encourage everyone to use that right. Because like, as Paula said, if we, if we get out and vote, it's something that we can change by voting our, our, the privilege away of not being able to get on social media and complain. Anyone can complain, but it takes the voice of the people to change things. And if we get out and vote, we can make that happen. You can't do that on social media, you can't do it on Twitter, you can't do it on Instagram. So to get out and vote, make your voice be heard, and I appreciate all the efforts that you guys do. Thanks.
All right, I have a short one of the youth gymnastics. Kids gymnastics is gonna begin on March 7th, so get your information in.
Parks and Recreation will have the open registration for the 2020 Summer Day Camp beginning on Monday, March the 2nd, and the first session will run from June 15th to July 10th, so if you'd like to get your kids signed up. And then another note, the 19, or the 2019 winter tax bills are due in my office by the end of this month, but because of the day, the way they fall, it will be March 2nd before we will be sending them delinquents. So if you haven't paid it, you got a chance to get it in before we send them downtown. Thank you.
On Thursday, February 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the Belleville Area Museum will be hosting Mr. Brown Goes to Washington. This event will feature stories and photos from Douglas Brown's time in DC. This event is free for members, $5 for non-members. Pizza, salad, soda will be served at 5:30.
Sherry?
September Day Senior Citizen Center will be having a Drive Away the Winter Blues Golf Clinic. Everybody wants to play golf. It's gonna be on Thursdays at 1:00 p.m. starting March 5th. This is a four-week class that will provide information as well as hands-on training indoor and out. Sign up at the Senior Center.
Okay. We're gonna be moving on then. We're now going to call for public comment on items that are on the agenda today, which is the two PEA associates, Iron Bell Trail. There'll be public comment afterwards on anything you want to talk about. So moving forward, our first item is, can I get a motion for considering approval of the professional services agreement with PEA associates?
Supervisor, I make a motion to consider approval of the professional services agreement with PEA for the segment of the Iron Bell Trail through Van Buren Township, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Support. Okay. Director?
Good evening. This contract is to continue work through PEA Incorporated for the Iron Bell Trail that extends from Edgemont Street in the city of Belleville to Martinsville Road on the south side of Huron River Drive. This work has been budgeted and will be paid for by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant we received last year for $300,000. The cost of PEA to assist with topographic survey, geotechnical investigation, final easement documents if needed, permits, building documents, and meetings is $59,200. And so this, this is just a contract for, for that work.
Any questions? It's basically, we've talked about Iron Bell all along. This is basically telling the, you know, the engineering company to start making up bid documents and give us the information to go to Wayne County to get our final permits. Trustee Frazier?
And this is, the cost for doing the plans and things come from a grant that Van Buren Township secured, or you secured for us, so that it was like a $300,000 grant, correct? That we, that we got. You know, this iron, the Iron Bell Trail, I believe runs from Belle Isle all the way up to Ironwood or somewhere in the Upper Peninsula, and it's a bike and walking path that citizens could take a bike tour of the whole state. And it's, it's really trying to get our citizens to be more active by biking, walking, and it's a good thing for the, for the communities and for, it's a way for people to see the state in a different avenue besides just in their cars. So I, and I appreciate all the work that you have done on securing all these grants and things for us, and the director of Public Services also. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor. Trustee White?
One issue with the Iron Bell Trail is, you don't get to ride the entire length of it. There is one issue, the Mackinac Bridge. When you get to the Mackinac Bridge, you have to park your bike, telephone the Mackinac officials, the bridge officials, and they will send a truck to the south side, pick you up, pick your bike, and transport you to the north side of the bridge where you can pick up your bike and go ahead with your ride.
Okay. I have a motion for approval, and I have a second. I hear no further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. Stay right there, Director. Next item, I need a motion for approval for another PEA professional services contract. Trustee White?
Elm Parks 2020 Outstanding Park Design Award for the Quirk Park Splash Pad. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, to consider approval of the professional services agreement with PEA Incorporated for the segment of the Iron Bell Trail through the east end of Van Buren Township, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Support. Director, take us.
Okay. With the continued funding Van Buren Township is receiving from the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Second Mini Grant Program of $50,000, we would like to continue to work with PEA. This particular contract is for the east end of Van Buren Township. PEA has identified a segment of pathway noted as Section J in the Van Buren Township Iron Bell Phasing Map. This segment includes a rail crossing and is critical to the success of the overall route at the east end of the township, and should be prioritized for further advancement of the overall route. The project area is the south side of Huron River Drive between Edison Lake Road and Hagerty Road. PEA will assist the township in developing preliminary plans, topographic survey of tail rail crossing permit, construction drawings, and meetings. And so this contract was for $34,000, and that will come out of the $50,000 that we received from the mini grant.
This is the same as the original one, but this also includes us working with Wayne County to build in the, the new bridge that's going over here on River Drive, and hopefully a crossing for us. Super, oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Martin?
We're gonna hear PEA Incorporated a lot, because they are instrumental in doing a lot of the work in, for the Iron Bell Trail throughout Michigan. So they have a lot of experience, excuse me, that, excuse me, they have a lot of experience with this trail, and- with this trail, and they're leading the way. So I think they're gonna do a good job for us.
Okay. I have a motion. Oh, sorry, Trustee Miller.
So PEA, they're doing this throughout the state, aren't they? There's no other company, correct?
Not that I'm aware, I mean, they're the main engineers that communities are using for this, as it relates to engineering, yes. I was thinking of funding too.
Working with the state, so there is no other company?
Yeah, not that I know of.
Through the chair. But they went out to bid. Is, I remember seeing bids for engineering or something.
Yeah, way back in the beginning when we started this process. And they were also recommended to us when a representative from the DNR came to us, and this was all so new to us. So we've been working along with PEA for several years now. But this is actually just securing, the thing with the Iron Bell is just, there's just lots of different segments throughout this trail, even within Van Buren Township, and different funding. So that's why we just have to keep breaking it down. And it makes sense to just continue to use PEA all throughout this process.
And I just have one question. So the pathway is 10 feet wide, is that correct, blacktop?
Um.
Township, that's what I read somewhere.
Yes, majority of, yes, will be 10.
10 feet wherever they can to accommodate bikes and walkers at the same time was my, so it should be a sufficient size to accommodate more than one or two people walking side by side.
Right.
Okay.
Trustee White, did you have something?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Could you possibly expand on a couple of the obstacles that we would be facing on this portion of the trail, specifically crossing the railroad tracks, how that will work and how the function will be there, and also the bridge?
Actually, I don't know if Director Bass, you wanna talk about the bridge at all? I know he's had some contact with the engineers over there.
Trustee White, I can speak in general terms.
Understand.
Since we haven't brought the engineers on board, I can't give you every single technical reason why there's a challenge or. There are three distinct challenge points for this section of road. One, the bridges, the bridge is a natural, it's a man-made limiting factor. It's only so wide, it can only hold so much traffic. And currently, the sidewalk is on the opposite side of the road where the trail is planned to go. So it is fortuitous that the county has decided through, actually a lot of hard work from supervisor McNamara, working with Wayne County, getting the county to recognize that the pathway had to be on the other side of the bridge. And they're actually, we're working with the engineers currently to make sure it's wide enough. It won't be 10 feet on the bridge, there's just not enough room unless you wanna add a zero to the bridge cost.
No.
We wanna try to keep it within the existing width. So we'll work to get the pathway probably six feet wide at that location. That's our goal. The second, the second challenge is the railroad crossing. Anytime you have to cross a railroad crossing, it has to be at grade, and both the county and the railroads have distinct rules on how that crossing must be brought over. The type of crossing it is determines its width, the timing of the lights, it also, the safety measures that are taken for the railroad crossing. So there's a lot of engineering that goes into that. So that's why this contract is so important. And the third challenge is, we've actually listened to our residents' concerns that were brought up in the beginning of this with the challenges to the Iron Bell Trail that a lot of residents had on that curve. And by taking the pathway that we have, we've actually eliminated the crossing that was going to take place on that road to the other side in listening to the residents. We've also taken into account the speed that cars are traveling down, so we're actually trying to move the pathway away from the road even more. So a lot of the concerns that the residents had that were along Huron River Drive are the third logistical challenge that we have for that site. So that's really the things that the township and PEA will be working towards on this.
The railroad crossing will be on the west side of the current grade crossing?
I'm sorry.
Will the Iron Bell Trail crossing be on the west side of the current rail?
Yes.
Grade road crossing?
My understanding is that is correct.
Okay. And how about the bridge? Will it be on the south side?
That is my understanding, that it will be.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a second. I have hearing, no further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. We move on down to, excuse me, reports which we have none. We are now into public comments for non-adjunct items. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak is welcome to come on up and speak now.
My name is Barbara Miller, and I, in this public comment period, I would like to ask the board to think about appointing a cultural committee or commission. The name, I think, is not important. But I think that we need to look beyond our time in 2020. We need to be looking down the road. We have growing cultural organizations in the community, and we have no home. Only the Historical Society has a home. And it is a prime piece of real estate right next to our new library, and I am asking the board to consider appointing a cultural committee or commission to study the highest and best use of what we currently call the Historical Museum. There's no place for the Art Council to meet or store or archive its records, and we've certainly been in existence for 30 years, and I believe that we will continue. We have the music, the Belleville Chorus, and there are other community organizations besides the Historical Museum. And I think we ought to have a committee that looks at the land, the real estate that the township owns to see if it can't be a better service, bigger, and I don't mean that, I don't mean to demean the Historical Society by this, but they are one organization in a growing community, in a community that is getting more sophisticated, and we need to, the other cultural organizations need some accommodation, they need a home. Other communities, like Dearborn, the Performing Arts Center is really a cultural center. There are like 80 or 90 organizations that operate out of that. The director of that, Stella Green, is a good friend of mine, and I have come to understand their organization. But we need a committee to assess the needs and the accommodation of all of our cultural organizations. Thank you very much.
Attorney Miller? If I may, if you recall, while I was supervisor, we had a cultural committee, and then after I left office, it dissipated for whatever reason. I will fully support a cultural committee because I believe in your purpose, and I think it's be a valuable tool for this township. We need that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We usually, we usually don't debate speakers from the podium. Just makes it very difficult to move forward.
I'm not looking for debate.
I know. Yeah, I know. And your idea just took seed, okay?
We had a cultural committee before, but it evaporated.
Okay.
The other thing that I'd like to talk about tonight is the ERA. We have the League of Women Voters here. Women got the right to vote in 1920, and now we're waiting for the Equal Rights Amendment. And if you're following that on the news, the Equal Rights Amendment has been passed now by the necessary states, I think it's 38 states. Five have rescinded that, but there is a piece of legislature pending that would extend the time period for the ERA. So I just, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
I thought that was passed in the 70s. Okay.
Start it, then.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else wishing to speak right now? No? Okay. All right. Does anybody from the board wanna speak?
I just have one question.
Trustee Miller?
So where are we going to hang these beautiful plaques? Who gets that? The DEA? The Parks and Rec here?
Actually, I had three of them made.
Smart, smart man. All right.
That's liaison. All right.
All right. Where are we at? I'm sorry.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think it's a good, it's an opportunity for our residents to, I would encourage anybody who is running for office on our regional level as representative or whatever to introduce themselves, because I think it's important for our citizens to, you know, have an opportunity to see these people and know who they are, put a face with the thing. So I would like, I know that Kristi Pagan represents our area in the state legislator, legislature, and we have someone with us that is running, and if there's anybody else I didn't notice, I think it's important for the residents to have an opportunity to see a person that takes time when they're running to come to township board meetings.
I have no objection, as long as it doesn't turn into a campaign. More than welcome to come up there.
Step up, introduce yourself. You just can't do electioneering against them running for this or that.
So if there's anyone in the audience at this time, please come up and introduce yourself.
Putting you on the spot? No.
Thank you for the introduction. So not quite sure what I'm allowed to say, but my name is Ranjiv Puri. I am a resident of Canton, of District 21 here, which represents Canton, Van Buren Township and Belleville, and I am running for state representative in the primaries in August 4th of this year. Some of my important issues are public education, cleaning up our water, fixing our healthcare system, but I'd love to, I'll be around today, love to answer any questions that anyone may have. But again, my name is Ranjiv Puri, and remember to believe in Ranjiv. Thank you.
This would be taking Kristi Pagan's state rep position.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing no further comments.
Up to the chair.
Sorry. Trust your bud.
At our last meeting, it became quite vocal that one of our trustees was concerned that the fact that we'd put on a holiday party for our employees and paid for it, that it was being paid for with public funds. Many times, he was told there was not public funds involved. And I do have a letter from the attorney and the Michigan Department of Treasury, and the MTA all agree that it's the source of funds, that it's important. And these funds were private donations made to the township, not involving the use of any public funds of the township. And those private funds donated and were earmarked by the donor for a particular use, which was the employee's Christmas party. Now, everyone that took part in it donated, and even the trustee who said it was so illegal, had sent a check to the township, made out to Van Buren Township so that we could use these funds. I have a list of all the donors, I have a list, a copy of the attorney's opinion. It was not illegal. It bothers me that someone wants to sit at this board and keep saying we are illegal, and that was not an illegal use of funds.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
So we can take in donations, put them in our account, but they're purely donations. So we can put them in, we could take them out, as long as we don't use public money for a party. We all donated, so there's nothing illegal about putting it into a fund, a holding, until we're ready to use that.
Correct.
All right.
Supervisor. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Trustee Frazier and White.
You know, but for, I understand what the concern was. If somebody just takes a look at the voucher list, if a citizen, who, citizens can look at the voucher list, and you just get a running list of all the expenses that were expended from the township funds, it looks like it's not, it's not true, but it looks like, because it says $700 coats for kids, or employee luncheon, or whatever, it looks like to the regular person that the township is paying for it. Maybe I would suggest that we have a separate ledger or something that denotes donations to the township and what they're used for. There should be some, you know, note or something so that people can easily figure out what kind of donations from the general public that we receive. I don't know if that's possible, Treasurer.
I am the person who brought that forward, because I look at the voucher list with a microscope every time it comes to us, and I have read up on this considerably. And it is illegal, township funds for a Christmas party, as stated in a lot of the Michigan Municipal League explicitly states that it is illegal to use it for a private purpose or Christmas parties. If we commingle a private donation into a public fund, at that point, it becomes a public fund. You cannot commingle, or you should not commingle, private donations into a public account. And I stand by my statement, and it's the way that I read and I understand it, that we were wrong in approving that, and it was approved with only, I think, myself voting against it. And I'm just looking forward that we follow the law to the extent that we can and that we do, and that we don't have any misunderstanding, any commingling of funds between private donations and public funds, and then write a check from the township for a Christmas party coming out of a township legal account.
Trustee Martin? That's a practice that is known as a pass-through, and has been documented by the treasurer. There is nothing illegal, there were no township funds used for those purposes, for that party. It is a pass-through. The money was donated by citizens, and it passed through the township, and the party was paid for. She has documentation that the checks were from some trustees, and I don't know who else, but it's a pass-through, and it's not illegal. We did not use any township funds, and to keep saying that it's illegal is wrong, because it's not. It's been explained, there's documentation, and I think that should be sufficient.
Through the chair. I think we're, you're saying commingled, but they're earmarked. And there's documentation that clearly states what it's for and how it was used. It's very clear. So commingled, no. Earmarked, yes. That's the difference.
But would it, through the chair, would it be possible to just have a separate accounting of donations?
We do maintain, we do maintain a separate record of it, and that's what she does.
Okay.
So we have it all down, yeah. We have it down to the penny.
But when we get the voucher list.
The voucher list is still going to be written to, the voucher list is still going to be written to who the checks are being written to. The one that he spoke about was someone who had supplied food. Those checks are written by the township, the money's in that account, and it's written to whoever the vendor is that's being used for that particular event, and that is, and that is, check is paid.
And I'm not saying anything is being done illegally or anything like that, but I think for the general public and the citizens to clarify where the money comes from without having. having to order the checks, you know, if you're just, if you're just a regular person and you look at the voucher list, it says-
Right, and, and maybe from now on, when, when those kind of checks are written, she probably should make a note-
Yeah.
-that it was paid for by a donation. Now, we can do that, so that when whoever happens to look at it would know that that was paid for by a donation. That's not, that's not hard.
You could have like a little asterisk or something, and at the bottom of the page say, "This was paid for by donations."
Right.
Same thing with the Co-Drive or any other event or fundraiser that we, we hold.
Yeah.
Trustee, uh, excuse me, Clerk Wright, I'm-
Yeah, I think we're getting, we're getting the voucher list mixed up with the chart of accounts. And the chart of accounts it does was, like the Treasurer say, it does specify what it's coming out of. Coast, for instance, Coast for Kids, we know, I do that every year, doing it since 2012. It's a line item in the, in the charts of accounts that say donations in, Coast for Kids, and then it's a line item for donation, for expenditure. Now, with the voucher list, the voucher list is something for you to look at as the Board of Trustees, to let you do your, your job as the overseer of the money, to show you who that being paid to.
But doesn't the public look at that, Liam?
They can look at it, but they can also look at the, uh, they can also look at the chart of account. If you look at the budget, you can see that that money is there and it's been allocated out.
I understand that.
But if you, also, if you look at the, the expense number, if you look at the expense number, it also indicates what it's being itemized from. It's gonna tell you it's from 101, 705, 000, and that's, and that's the, uh, line item for Coast for Kids donation, or it's gonna say, blah, blah, blah. Each individual number is gonna give you what it's coming from. If you look at that number, that's what tells you what the, what the item, what the money's been expensed from, one line item. And for the, for the actual person that picked up the budget, you don't know what you're looking at. That's why it's a, that's why you had to pick up the phone and call someone and say, "Hey, what am I looking at? What is this?" Uh, and that, and that, in that instance, that would be the Clerk office. You can ask me, or you can ask the deputy, or you can ask the accountant, or you can ask the Council's pale clerk, and they'll be happy to explain it to you. Anyone that picks up any budget for the township is not gonna know what they're looking at. It took me several years to, to learn the budget for the township, so I know anyone that goes online and, and look at it don't know what they're looking at. So just say that you pull up the budget and look at it and say, "Oh, I understand what this is." You're not gonna understand unless you get on the phone and inquire, and there can be explained, and then you'll get a explanation of what's going on.
But we need to make it as clear as possible for the public.
You know what?
To look at, not complicate it.
Okay, we can make, you know, we, we can do what we can in the, in the notations on, on these things. I, I think what, I, I think though, this has been three years we've been here, and this is three years that the same argument keeps on coming up. And three years now, I wasn't here last week, otherwise I would've said, you know, we've already done this exercise. This is three legal opinions we've gotten on the same thing, all three say the same thing.
Then we need to progress.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a dead issue. If you want to talk about it, you can, but I'm not talking about it anymore. I've got the legal opinions, I got more than that, more legal opinions than I know what to do with on this. So I'm leaving it alone.
I think we're in agreement that we need to improve the, the denotation that, you know, that coats for kids are donations, strictly donations, that the clerk works very hard at getting these donations made so we can provide coat, coats for, uh, students.
I think everybody know that. I know I put it out in the public all the time, where I get my donation from.
We can always improve this process. We can talk about this afterwards.
Is, go ahead.
It's my understanding that coats for kids is for a public purpose, not for an individual or two.
No.
Coats for kids is a public purpose to make sure that the kids in our community who cannot afford a coat are given a coat, and I fully support coats for kids. I've been there, and, and I appreciate what Clerk is doing for this. It's an entirely different situation than running a Christmas party for employees. Employees work and make money. The kids don't, parents or whoever do not have the money to buy coats for their kids, and I appreciate our Clerk taking care of that situation.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to talk about on this?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion, I've got support, hearing no, no nays. We're adjourned. Thank you.